Good evening, everybody. I would call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for today, Tuesday, June 17th, 2025. I will call upon Councilmember Pfeifer for the moment of reflection, Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Please join me in a moment of silent reflection. And now for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rush, if you'll do the roll call.
Mayor Simpson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Mormon. Councilmember Ambrose.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeifer.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Rupert.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
I move that we excuse Mayor Protem Mormon from this evening's meeting.
All those are cast. That passes six to zero. Mayor Protem Mormon is an excused absence. Thank you very much. Next, we have the approval of the minutes for June 3rd, 2025. Are there any edits or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, those stand approved. And Councilmember Pfeifer, we has our proclamation for this evening for Juneteenth, 2025.
Yeah, forgive me, I'm having computer problems right now, so I'm gonna borrow my peers to make sure I don't miss anything.
It's all right. This teamwork makes the dream work. Well done, guys.
Nope, I'm good. I just wanted to double-check the thing. All right, I have a proclamation for Juneteenth, so I'll go and read that, and then I'll ask some people to come down to the podium. Whereas Juneteenth observed each year on June 19th marks the end of slavery in the United States, and whereas Juneteenth serves as a day of reflection, remembrance, and celebration of African-American history, culture, and contributions to our communities at country, and whereas Jefferson County Public Libraries play a vital role in fostering education, inclusion, and community dialogue by offering programs, resources, and events that highlight the significance of Juneteenth and African-American heritage, and whereas the City of Arvada recognizes and appreciates organizations like the Jefferson County Public Library for their commitment to fostering inclusivity, promoting understanding, and engaging the community in meaningful conversation that strengthens unity and respect of all individuals. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Mayor and the Arvada City Council hereby designate June 19, 2025, as Juneteenth in the City of Arvada, and commends Jefferson County Public Libraries for their exemplary work in encouraging learning and promoting a strong, more united community where all people are welcomed and valued. It's dated the 17th day of June, 2025, signed by the Mayor and all City Councils. So Cynthia Kiotake... Oh, see, I was gonna mess that up. Kiotake? Close. Thank you. She's with the Jefferson Library. She's the Chief Libraries and Inclusion Officer, and she's here to accept the proclamation and to say a few words. So if you'd like to come down and get the proclamation, that'd be great.
Is it here? Okay. Do a quick photo, and then we'll have you make a couple of remarks. Bring the whole team up. You know, come here, up here. As the Chief Libraries and Inclusion Officer for Jefferson County Public Library, I am Through programs and resources, our libraries enhance community understanding and historical context for Juneteenth. Some highlights of the library's Juneteenth celebrations include an afternoon of jazz music at Columbine Library, along with a program about the significance and relevance of jazz, partnering with the City of Edgewater to offer programming on the Civil Rights Act, and an Arvada Library and Arvada Center collaboration to offer Sanufo-inspired mud painting in honor of Juneteenth at our Art Around the World bilingual camp in June. We are pleased to connect our patrons and community to the history of Juneteenth and the ongoing celebration of Black history and joy. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have no presentations this evening, so I'll move us into the first public comment session of this evening's agenda. This is public comment at our three-minute limit, so we're going to ask that you do keep it at three minutes. In addition, we always ask that you keep your comments directed to the council. We are not allowed to respond at this time, but if you have a comment that needs follow-up, we will have a member of our team follow-up with you, or a council member if that's more appropriate. And in addition, we always just encourage decorum in the chambers, so we always request no applause, no booing. We want to create an environment where everybody feels that it's okay to have their voice heard, and that includes with audience interaction. So with that, I will call up our first public comment, and that is Mr. Carl Campanella.
Good evening, Mayor Simpson, City Council staff. My name's Carl Campanella. I'm president of the Arvada Junior Chamber Foundation, which is operating, or the J.C.'s operating as the Arvada Junior Chamber Foundation. We wanted to come before you tonight and extend to our heartfelt thanks to City of Arvada and to the direction and support that we've received from leadership areas of the city in order to bring the Arvada Harvest Festival back to Old Town Arvada this year for the 100th Annual Historic Arvada Harvest Festival Session. This is the 100th year. We're very, very happy and very proud to be involved with it, and more so for the commitment and unwavering dedication that we have received from all of you, from the city, from different organizations in having this come off. We thank you. Shelley St. John here has got some invitations for City Council and a few others involved here. Save the dates, Friday, September 5th from 5:00 to 10:00, Saturday, September 6th from 10:00 to 10:00, and Sunday, September 7th from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We will have food courts, or not food courts, but food vendors. Yes?
I'm just flashing it off for the cameras.
That's okay. Oh, you will notice, too, the chocolate, white, and milk chocolate are all from Enstrom's, Arvada's own, right here as well, for y'all, just a little treat. We do have quite an array of things that we're gonna have done this year, quite an array. We are bringing back the cow chip tossing contest, if anybody's interested. As you know, we are the only cow chip tossing contest sanctioned, sanctioned, in Colorado from the Beaver Chamber of Commerce in Beaver, Oklahoma. They have sanctioned us. We've been sanctioned now for 10 years. We don't know what the sanction is against store four, but we have been sanctioned, so we hope you enjoy it. But we have several of our chairmen, sort of committee people here. We have, Shelley St. John's doing our marketing and some fundraising for us. We have Deb, I can't remember Debby's last name, only known her for four or five years. I just, chronological maturity has set in. We have Jeff, Jeff Cannon, Janice, and in the back there, you'll notice in the hat, who I think has put in a little thing to speak later on his own, is Ed Tomlinson, Arvada's own. So Ed is back with us again this year after a few years of absence. So we thank you very much, and we hope you all will come out, everybody we hope will come out, for the festival. As you remember, it is the 100th Annual Arvada Harvest Festival. Thank you.
All right, with that, Mr. Tomlinson. He is playing the walk-up music. Yes.
It didn't work. Double luck is, Gigi couldn't make it, maybe in two weeks. We had a whole program scheduled for the next three minutes. But let me at least bring in current. We're going to meet maybe 50 to 60 groups in Arvada, and here's a few of the boards: Arvada Rotary, Arvada Elks, Arvada Apex, Jeffco Library, I missed her, Historical Society Center, Knights of Columbus, Kiwanis, and a whole bunch of more. So there are some other groups that we would like to contact, and that would be Safeway, King Supers, Ace Hardware, Amazon, Costco, Walmart, and Home Depot. Now, why these are important is many of their suppliers have really cool parade entries. So we're gonna ask them to contact their state or national group and send them in. And Texas Roadhouse, everybody loves them, and we'll go from there. I've also contacted Old Town Pick and Parlor, and we'll be meeting with them, and I think they would be great in the pre-Parade entertainment. We also have some things that we're talking to with the Arvada Fire. I didn't get on the agenda last week, so maybe in another couple of weeks I will, then I'll bring that to the chamber, to the council. Thank you very much. Too bad about the music.
Thanks for not bringing a trombone this time, Mr. Tomlinson. With that, Nathan Sloat.
I am here to continue advocating against the lawsuit over H.B. 1304 and 1313. I'd like to specifically focus on the impact of parking at transit sites. A 2020 study by R T.D. found that Denver metro cities only use 60% of the parking near transit sites. This jumps up to 50% when looking at income-restricted housing. We are building way more parking than we need. So what is the impact? At a hypothetical 50-unit building in the Denver metro area, we're providing 25 more parking spaces than is necessary, an extra half a space per unit. Those spaces would cost the developer up to a quarter of a million dollars in added construction costs for something we don't even use. Beyond that is the real estate. A typical parking space, counting the lane to drive up to it, takes up 300 to 400 square feet. Using our example 50-unit building, we could have 10,000 square feet of parking costing upwards of a quarter of a million dollars that's not going to be used. This means that housing is more expensive. Developers have to buy extra real estate, they have to pay to build the parking spots, and they have to manage the additional stormwater costs. As a city, it costs us tax revenue by having all this parking, doing nothing, not generating anything. All of these costs either mean that developers won't build more housing, or if they do, that those costs will be passed on to renters like me. A recent study from Rutgers found that removing these extra spaces saves tenants more than $1,000 per year in rent. These costs hit low-income folks in our community particularly hard. Not only do these costs a larger burden on their finances, but low-income families also have lower rates of car ownership. That is why I would strongly recommend dropping this lawsuit. Parking near transit is expensive, uses huge amounts of space, and we aren't even going to use it. I'm all for the city making its own decisions, but when it comes to parking near transit centers, the current system isn't working. So again, I would urge you to drop this lawsuit, and frankly, to look at more aggressive parking reform across the city. Given the past interest, the previous City Council meeting, I would also encourage you to add this to the agenda at future meetings, given the amount of community interest. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Pat Malone.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Pat Malone. I live at 6273 Kilmer Loop in Arvada. Saturday was an amazing day around the country and here in Old Town Arvada, where 3,000 Americans, give or take, gathered in Arvada to express our anger at the current administration, their blatant abuse of power on many fronts. This was our third APA-led rally, and each time, we've notified the Arvada Police Department ahead of our planned rallies. Saturday's event was 10 times as big as the prior ones, and our officers were visibly present. I want to thank these police officers who periodically cruised by and kept an eye on the crowd. Although there were no known incidents, your presence was reassuring, and we thank you for being on the lookout to squatch any trouble that might have come up. Depending on who you listen to, the Trump administration is either finally recognizing the impact on our country if it deports 10 to 15 million immigrants who are integral to our communities, including Arvadas, or they're ramping up to force local law enforcement to assist them in their work. I know it's in our police department's policy to not assist ICE. However, as pressure mounts, I ask that the Arvada Police Department remain committed to your written policy that you will not help them detain immigrants. Though I have no reason to think otherwise, I feel it's necessary to speak up and say this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Colin Jenny.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Thank you for your time. My name is Dr. Colin Jenny. I was born in downtown Denver, grew up in Lakewood. My family had to move out of state for financial reasons, but after I married my amazing wife back there of 20 years, we had always dreamed of moving back. We put ourselves through college, dug ourselves out of debt, and saved for many years, living well below our means to make that dream come true. And when we were finally able to make that happen in 2024, we found our home in Arvada. And so we were able to move into a property that we could well afford to make sure to save up for our children's futures. We found that in the Indiana 91st region out towards Candellas. And so we were so excited to be able to move there and have loved it since, and very much felt at home in Arvada. Unfortunately, our dream there has been a little bit compromised here recently, as we have come to find out that there are commercial businesses that are going to be moved in just across the street from us, not 25 to 30 feet from our front door. They include a large car wash and a very, very large tire center that are unfortunately redundant with institutions that are just down the street, visible from the corner of the properties we're referring to at 9144 Howell Street. The reasons we fought so hard to move here, to be able to provide a better life for our children. I'm trained in psychology, and we wanted to be able to have our children to view nature, to be able to be outdoors, to be more fit and healthy, to be outdoors more often and engage with that. We wanted to be near the Metroplex to be able to work. We're both educators. My wife works in Arvada for Jeffco ISD, and so we hope to be able to have that opportunity for them. These types of businesses are known for being polluters, the types of smells that will come out of dirty car water, and the types of chemical smells or noxious fumes that are not exactly going to make our property values go up as a neighborhood. I come here not alone to you tonight, as we come with a group representing our neighborhood as well as a petition signed. This represents dozens of others, only the ones we could get ahold of just today, who do not wish to have these businesses forced upon us, again, mere feet from our front door. We're also concerned not only about the increase of crime potentially from these businesses, the loss of privacy, the decrease in property value, and again, from reading other reports, the increase in smell that will occur from these types of things, making it next to unlivable. For the past year, we have come to call Arvada home, and we've come to love the culture of Arvada. Having residential so near to commercial, especially these types of commercial businesses, I feel is not the Arvada culture, and I really wanted to come here to try to plead with this group, to help us to find a remedy in our journey here. We wish our children to grow up in a good environment, to be able to have a neighborhood that they feel that they can go out and play in, not to be able to compete with businesses' smells and the pollutants that may come out of these businesses. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Please share the petition with Ms. Rush, our city clerk. Thank you. Ms. Rush, there's a request for a copy for the council as well. Thank you.
Yeah, and it's contact information.
Okay, thank you. All right, next, we have James Koprund. Apologies if I mispronounced that.
That's okay. I run into that a lot. Koprund, I spell it. But thank you for having me, City Council, also here to talk about the discount tire and the car wash here. I think one of my biggest concerns is, you know, as I'm a mechanical engineer in the construction industry and doing a lot with HVAC and plumbing, and my understanding is that that car wash wants to utilize a water reclamation system, which in theory sounds fantastic, but these systems are also known to have considerable smell with that water as it's reused recycled water. I think that in combination with the potential tire smells that are also coming out of the store, this is a rather large discount tire that is being planned there. From my research, discount tires sees anywhere from 75 to 200 cars, 200 customers a day, which is significant vehicle pollution, that all of our homes are in the prevailing winds, downwind from these businesses, which will be blowing this smell straight down our, right down all of our front porches. So I think we just, we have a lot of concern that these businesses might not really be the best option for what could be going here. I think me and my girlfriend actually just purchased our first home in that neighborhood right there, and so I think we had moved in under the illusion that there would be some sort of green, you know, field of some sort of green center out there, and so it almost feels like a bit of a rug pull that, you know, this is our first home, and this is something that we're trying to grow, grow our family and, you know, settle down in Arvada. Emily back there, she owns horses in the neighborhood, and we just, we came to love Arvada, and we love where we live. I think we want to continue to love where we live without, you know, these pollutants that are flying right down in front of our houses, so, yeah.
Thank you. All right, next, we have Kathy Escobar.
My name is Kathy Escobar, and I've lived in Westwoods neighborhood since 2001 in Ward Two. Our five kids graduated from Ralston Valley High School, and we love living in Arvada. While I often participate in Broomfield City Council meetings with my work at The Refuge on behalf of housing and homelessness, this is the first time that I've ever shared in Arvada, as I have really felt compelled to come tonight. I realize that Old Town Arvada businesses and organizations have been really frustrated by the realities of people who are unhoused in this community. But the problem should not be directed at people who are experiencing homelessness. The problem is ours, together, as a community, as we wrestle with this question, what are we going to do together to provide temporary shelter, transitional housing, and affordable housing options for the most marginalized in our community? These human beings are Arvadans. This is where many went to school or found work here, or relocated here, and now call home. Yet unlike many of us, there are literally no options here for a true home. Mission Arvada, who is a longtime friend of The Refuge, who I have been connected with personally, is a crucial part of the fabric of social services in Arvada. They do provide temporary shelter during the day and on extremely life-threatening cold nights for vulnerable Arvadans. They provide a small sense of home as they work tirelessly to help participants find crucial resources they need to work towards housing. Their work helps keep people who are unhoused in a safe and supportive space during the day, and our work as a community should be, what are we doing to support what's needed? At the end of the day, true options on housing and places to call home in this city. As a City Council working on income-aligned housing and crucial resources for people experiencing homelessness, the question we all should be asking is, how do we support the work of these crucial nonprofits who, without their help, are Arvada citizens, would suffer, and many would die, especially in the winter, 105-degree temperatures that are on their way? And along with that, asking, how can we break through our tendency to other people? And remember that there is no us and them, there is only us, and we as a community need to keep working on creative solutions together instead of pointing fingers at those people. And what are we going, and what are you going to do about it? The question should always be, how can we work together to create a safe place to call home for all Arvadans? There is no us and them, there's only us.
Ma'am, apologies for your time. Thank you. All right, next, we have Cara Thorson.
I'm Cara Thorson. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I also wanted to thank those of you on the council who took the time to meet with Pat Young and myself a few months ago to discuss advancing animal welfare in Arvada. We enjoyed talking to you, and we were happy to learn that you love animals as much as we do. So tonight, I wanted to share a story about a woman who purchased a puppy from a pet store. In 2021, Colorado resident Holly Delgado, she walked into a pet store called Pet City to buy a puppy. She bought him home and named him Sammy, but what she didn't know, and what the store didn't tell her, was that Sammy was born in a puppy mill in South Dakota. At three and a half pounds, he was shipped to Nebraska to be neutered, and then trucked to Fort Collins to be sold. By the time this tiny puppy arrived at the store, he was already sick, but instead of receiving medical care, he was put on display in a glass enclosure, and he lingered there for weeks. When Holly took him home, she quickly realized something was wrong. He refused to eat, and she tried to feed him with a syringe, but his condition got worse. His belly swelled up, and just one week after leaving the store, he died. Holly was devastated. She's no longer with us, but if she could be here tonight, she definitely would. So in memory of Sammy, and for all the dogs who suffer for pet store profits, we refer to the proposed ordinance as Sammy's Law, and the stickers we wear bear his image. So how do puppy mill dogs even get into Colorado? The answer is simple: pet stores. Pet stores and puppy mills work hand in hand. The puppy mills are typically located in remote areas located in Wyoming, South Dakota, Nebraska, Kansas, surrounded by farms. These mills rely on pet stores located in Colorado to sell their dogs, making cities like Arvada the perfect outlet to unload sick and genetically compromised puppies for Right now, there's nothing in the municipal code to stop these unethical pet sales from taking root. What we're asking for is simple and straightforward, a change in the code that would prohibit the sale of dogs and cats in pet stores. It would protect future families from heartbreak, fraud, and financial loss. Let's ensure that no more puppies like Sammy are made to suffer. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Bob Young. Next we have Bob Young.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Bob Young. I've lived in Arvada for 29 years now. I'm here tonight to speak in support of a humane ordinance to prohibit the sale of puppies and kittens in pet stores. When you walk into a pet store, it's easy to be drawn in by the cute baby animals in glass enclosures. They look healthy, playful, well cared for, but behind the glass is a much darker reality, one that most consumers never see until it's too late. The vast majority of animals sold in pet stores are sourced from puppy and kitten mills. Breeding mothers are caged for life, denied proper medical care, forced to produce litter after litter. Their babies are often weaned far too early, compromising their immune systems before being packed into trucks and shipped long distances, sometimes across the country without adequate food, water, or ventilation. Many arrive sick, some don't survive the journey at all. Those who do survive are placed in pet store cages where they linger for weeks or months, deprived of exercise, vet care, and essential early socialization. Pets kept this way are far more likely to develop behavioral issues such as anxiety, aggression, and compulsive behaviors. Many of these animals are sold with underlying genetic disorders or contagious illnesses such as distemper or parvo disease that can be fatal and expensive to treat. Despite all this, pet stores continue to assure customers that their animals are healthy, but when a family discovers their new pet is sick, the store often refuses to take responsibility, refunds are denied, medical bills are not reimbursed. In some cases, grieving families are offered a replacement animal as if they were returning a broken appliance instead of mourning a pet that they love. This is not just unethical, it's fraud. Families are burned with enormous veterinary bills or forced to surrender their sick animals to shelters, and ordinance would protect their animals from humane treatment and protect customers from deceptive business practices. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Pat Young.
Don't want to be too loud. Good evening. I live in Arvada, and my name is Pat Young. I'm here to speak in support of a proposed ordinance that would advance our animal welfare laws. Many pet stores regularly source dogs and cats from commercial breeding facilities, commonly known as mills. These puppy and kitten mills operate under USDA licenses. I want to shed some light on what USDA regulations actually allow. I want to talk about puppies since they are the most commonly bred. The USDA imposes no limit on the number of animals a breeder can keep. Puppy mills can house 50 to 5,000 dogs. Dogs can be confined to wire cages every single day of their lives for years with no opportunity to run, play, or simply feel grass beneath their paws. Cages are often stacked, allowing excrement and urine to fall on the animals below. The USDA requires only six inches of space between the dog's body and the cage, barely enough room to turn around. Wire flooring is a standard, no solid flooring is required. Dogs can be legally exposed to extreme outdoor temperatures. Breeders can attach seven-day feeders to cages, meaning animals fester in their cages for a week without seeing anyone. There is no requirement for human interaction. They are denied love, socialization, and basic affection. Dogs with genetic defects, diseases, or injuries are still bred repeatedly. If a commercial breeder complies with all USDA requirements, animals can be kept in merciless conditions. These federal regulations are the very reason puppy mills exist in the first place. We may not be able to fix the federal laws that allow animal cruelty, but we can take a critical step towards advancing animal welfare by putting an end to unethical pet sales at our local pet stores. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next we have Pam Dickerson.
Thank you so much for hearing me. I am Pam Dickerson, and I speak in favor of a ban on the retail sales of puppies and kittens because they come from cruel, horrific puppy mills. Every store you've ever seen in Colorado or across the United States tells you they buy their puppies from good, humane, ethical breeders. I am here to tell you that based on statistics that I get from the State of Colorado Department of Agriculture, that is an absolute bald-faced lie. But how do you stop a store owner from concocting that story and telling some nice person who loves the little cute puppy face he sees so we still have the sales happening? But what I want to share with you is the State of Colorado summary numbers. I assimilate these numbers year after year. Every year, approximately 6,000 puppies from the mills are imported into Colorado to the now only seven remaining puppy stores here on the Front Range. Used to be 15, now there's seven. Some people are getting the word, but the mill owners are desperate for new outlets, and they're looking for new places. So what I want to assure you is, the truth is, from the State of Colorado Department of Ag, the puppies in these stores are, all of them, all of them, coming from these cruel mills. None are coming from ethical breeders. And I produce a report, which anyone can have, which basically calls these store owners liars. They put up nice websites, beautiful pictures, talk about their ethical sources they get their dogs from, and then someone reads my report that tells exactly where each store, every puppy goes to which store, tells you where they get their puppies from, bald-faced lies. So this report that I have given you a copy of will tell you the truth, and that's what we need to focus on. No ethical breeder would let their precious puppy go to a stranger and lose track of it for life. An ethical breeder would breed for health, list the results on the National Health Database, and track their puppy for life, bring that back up home. No store does that. So I've given you the stats, I hope you'll look at them, the report is quite damning, but this is why you want to be a compassionate city and protect your citizens from being taken in by somebody showing them a sweet, cute puppy face and telling them that the puppy came from a wonderful ethical breeder when in fact it came from a mill. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next we have Victoria Nixick.
My name is Victoria Nixick, and I live right here in Arvada. I'm here tonight to clarify an important point. The humane ordinance we're proposing will not impact local reputable breeders who have a kennel license. The impact would be placed solely on the puppy mill industry and the pet stores that source from them. Local breeders would never sell their dogs to a pet store, and there are two key reasons why. First, it doesn't make any financial sense. Pet stores buy puppies from puppy mills for about $200 each. A reputable breeder can sell their puppies from $3,000 to $5,000 or more because they invest heavily in their dog's care. They provide genetic testing, vaccinations, top-quality food, veterinary care, and most importantly, socialization, love, and attention. No responsible local breeder would sell their litter to a pet store because that would result in a huge financial loss. Secondly, reputable breeders wouldn't want to subject their puppies to the neglect found in puppy stores. These stores are closed for 100 to 120 hours per week, which means that these pet store puppies spend the vast majority of their time alone, isolated, and stressed in small enclosures. They receive little to no stimulation, affection, or exercise, and they are never allowed to go outside. This kind of mistreatment leads to serious behavioral and health issues that a local breeder would not subject their puppies to. To pet stores, these pups are not living, breathing beings in need of care, they are just merchandise. This ordinance would have zero impact on local breeders that hold a kennel license because they don't sell pets through retail stores. They will still be able to continue to sell their kittens and puppies the way they always have, from their homes directly to buyers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next we have Kenneth Krupa.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Thanks for taking the time to hear me speak. My name is Ken Krupa. I am the treasurer of Max Fund, which is Colorado's largest no-kennel animal shelter, and I am a proud resident of Arvada. I'm also proud to say my wife and I have decided to start our family here, and I always love to see people's faces when they come visit us, knowing that, seeing them realize that they ended up choosing the wrong town to settle in because it wasn't Arvada. Two quick points I want to make. I am speaking in support of that humane ordinance that some, several speakers before me spoke about. Two points that I really want to drive home though, and I think sort of the narrative that they've helped create really supports the point that, especially this first point that I'm trying to make. I would argue that it is in fact common knowledge at this point in this day and age, 2025, that these retail pet stores are selling puppy mill pets. What does that mean? I think that means that people that are looking to settle in our town, if we have a store that allows for the retail sale of pets, will realize, or rather will view us perhaps not as favorably. I do believe that it's a black eye and a dark mark on our town to allow for the sale of these animals in these pet stores. And I certainly think that it does cheapen our town, and I use that word deliberately, cheapen. I don't want to see it, and I do think that it'll have a negative impact on us. And the second point that I want to raise in support of this ordinance has to do with the fact that this ordinance attacks the root cause. I mentioned that I'm treasurer of Max Fund. I could say certainly from experience that Colorado, nationwide, shelters are up to their eyeballs in pets that are being dumped on them because many times, families purchase a pet from a pet store, from a non-reputable breeder, from a puppy mill, and that animal ends up being sick, having certain issues, the family no longer wants to care for it, they dump it at a shelter, and that shelter is stuck trying to figure out what to do with it. And Colorado is fantastic, Arvada is fantastic, we have a high absorption rate, we could take a lot of these animals in and adopt them, but with the amount of animals that are being dropped into these shelters, it is reaching a critical capacity point. And eventually, the community, the community that the shelter is located in suffers and surrounding communities. And I think by allowing the resale set, or allowing or not passing this ordinance and thus creating a possibility for a pet store to sell these retail pets will only in the future create a problem that we'll just have to solve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next we have Cory Lanigan.
My name is Cory Lanigan, and I live in Arvada. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. So how do puppy mill dogs end up in Colorado? Like we've said, the answer is simple, pet stores. Out-of-state puppy mills are often hidden away in remote rural areas in states like Nebraska, Kansas, and Wyoming. They rely on pet stores in populated cities in Colorado to unload very sick and genetically compromised puppies for profit. This makes Arvada a desirable location for these types of unethical pet sales. It is a well-documented fact that all pet stores source exclusively from puppy and kitten mills, as we've said. These facts can be verified through easily accessible USDA inspection reports, but luckily, many cities in Colorado are taking action to stop these sales. As of today, 24 cities in Colorado have passed this legislation specifically to prohibit the sale of dogs and cats in pet stores. The Denver City Council is currently drafting this ordinance in response to the outcry from Denver residents who care deeply about animal welfare. Eight states and over 500 cities across the nation have embraced this legislation, even in places you wouldn't expect. Places like Louisville, Kentucky, home of the Kentucky Derby, passed this ordinance. But they stood, they stood against the puppy mill industry to protect pets. These cities and states recognize the undeniable connection between puppy mills and pet stores. They agreed that while profit is an essential part of our economy, it must never serve as justification for animal abuse. And additional four states currently have pending legislation. Unfortunately, Colorado is not one of them. That is why we are here, asking our local city council to have compassion for the animals we love. We see them as families, not as commodities. This potential ordinance represents a turning point and a chance for Arvada to stand up for animal welfare and join the growing number of cities and states that have said no to puppy mills. And on a personal note, I also work for a friend of Jack Rescue. We have taken in puppy mill dogs, not puppies, the mothers that have endured all these horrible, these horrible things, and I can't tell you enough, you can't unsee what I've seen. Dogs unable to walk, and they're four years old, they've never seen anything before like grass, they've just seen the cages, so I hope that we can make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Cheryl Sane.
Good evening, and thank you for having me speak. My name is Cheryl Sape, and I've been actively working to end puppy mills for the past 12 to 13 years. My journey began when I first learned about the horrific conditions in puppy mills through an investigative report featured on The Oprah Winfrey Show. Witnessing the cruelty and inhumane treatment of dogs and puppies compelled me to take action. Since then, I have been dedicated to educating the public about the harmful practices of puppy mills and advocating against supporting this industry by avoiding the purchase of puppies from pet stores. It is well documented, including in the breeder-to-pet store report that you're going to get a copy of, that 100% of puppies sold in pet stores in Colorado originate from puppy mills, many of which, up to 90% of them, have serious USDA violations. In the United States, approximately 2.2 million puppies are sold annually from puppy mills, with many distributed through pet stores. There are an estimated 10,000 puppy mills operating nationwide, housing over 500,000 dogs used for breeding, living in these conditions 24/7. These facilities subject breeding dogs to unnecessary cruelty that you have heard about and cause them to suffer behavioral, congenital, and contagious illnesses. Responsible ethical breeders and rescues can provide breed-specific puppies without the need for puppy mills. Banning the sale of puppy mill puppies not only prevents the financial and emotional burden experienced by families who unknowingly purchase a sick puppy, but also alleviates the burden on overcrowded shelters and rescues where ill puppy mill dogs are often relinquished, as we just heard about the Max Fund. Pet stores can thrive by focusing on selling pet supplies, as demonstrated by numerous successful businesses that have operated for decades without selling puppies. Currently, there are no pet stores selling puppies in Arvada, making this ordinance both proactive and preventative. Allowing the sale of puppies in pet stores could lead to regular protests and rallies, as has been observed in other locations across Colorado and the United States. This is not something desirable for the community of Arvada. Let us address this issue preemptively and join the 24 other cities in Colorado, including Aurora, Fort Collins, and Littleton, and Greeley, and you're going to get a list of all the cities and states, and over 500 cities in the United States that have already banned the sale of puppies in pet stores. Together, we can take a stand against puppy mills, animal cruelty, and protect our consumers. Thank you.
Thank you. Last we have Sharon Hodge.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Sharon Hodge, and I am a resident of Arvada. I am the owner of Pet One Servada, located in the heart of Old Town. Since opening our nutrition-focused pet store has become a trusted part of the community, and for the past two years, we have been honored with being named Best Pet Supply Store of Arvada. Many of you have passed by or visited. It's a cheerful place where pets are always welcome, and our team is always ready to help find the healthiest choices for their furry companions. At Pet One Arvada, we proudly follow the humane business model, a conscious decision we made to never sell dogs or cats. Instead, we focus on supporting pet well-being and community values. As part of this commitment, we've been working with a local rescue for the past three years, hosting regular adoption events at our store. In that time, we are proud to share that we have had over 550 pets adopted from our stores and found loving homes facilitated at our location. These events are not only connecting animals with families, but also create visibility for responsible pet adoption and rescue work. We specialize in fresh, small-batch pet food made with high-quality ingredients, along with carefully selected treats, chews, toys, and supplements. Beyond retail, we are deeply committed to animal welfare and community engagement through donation drives and partnerships with rescues. Our success proves that humane business model is not only the right thing to do, it is also a smart, profitable, and sustainable way to run a business. It builds strong community relationships and supports long-term growth. Many responsible pet stores in Arvada already follow this model, and I urge you to support legislation like Samy's Law, which helps ensure this ethical standard to become the norm. By doing so, we can protect animals, support local businesses, and strengthen our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That's all we have that have signed up for public comment. Is there anyone else in chambers who would like to speak at this time? Kel.
I just wanted to ask a clarifying question while we have everybody here, with the attorney. I want to ask.
Ms. Morris, all right.
If you don't mind, Mayor.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor. We already prohibit any sale of dogs or cats anyways.
So we don't entirely prohibit it. What we do is we regulate the health and safety of animals by using a kennel licensing program. There aren't currently any businesses in the city of Arvada that have a kennel licensing program. However, when we do get reports from our residents or anyone else about someone located in the city of Arvada who's like selling pets on Craigslist or something like that, we do prosecute those offenses as a violation of our ordinance. So we are trying to look out for the health and safety of animals within the city, and again, we currently don't have any businesses that have a kennel license, so there's no one that we are aware of that's selling dogs and cats within city limits.
So if I was to translate that, we prohibit the sale in any public space or any store, any animal, so all of our stores are through adoptions. Now, any sale that happens is through a breeder, say, and they have to have a kennel license to do that, which is following the Colorado Department of Ags regulations.
So if a store sold pets, they would have to have a kennel license as well?
Right, but none have them right now.
Yeah.
The breeders. Yeah, the breeders have licenses.
Okay, so there are a couple of places that have licenses, but none of them sell dogs and cats.
Right, okay. Because I think the stores that I've, when I've walked through and looked, it's always adoption, so I just wanted clarification. But when I looked at the law several times now, we already have things in place that would prohibit any type of sale of a dog or cat or rabbit or anything else, really.
Correct, unless they have one of those licenses.
Kennel license, but there's a whole slew of regulations with that, and it's managed through our animal management program.
Correct, yep.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, so clearing those off, is there anyone else in chambers who would like to give public comment at this time? Seeing none, I will close this portion of public comment, and I will bring us into the next part of this evening's agenda, which is new business. So we have three items on this evening's consent agenda. Those are R-25-052, a resolution authorizing an agreement by and between the city of Arvada and Nex Civil Engineering and Construction LLC for 2024 Drainage Improvements, CSB-25-ENG-031, in an amount not to exceed $598,924.68. R-25-053, a resolution authorizing an agreement between the city of Arvada and Ridgedale Construction, Inc., for the replacement of the Danny Kendrick Park East Playground, in an amount not to exceed $565,915. And finally, R-25-054, a resolution authorizing an agreement between the city of Arvada and One Technology Corporation for Goods and Services relating to upgrading and supporting Arvada's networks, in an amount not to exceed $1.4 million. Councilmember Davis.
Members, are there any discussion? Then I'd like to make the motion.
Please.
I'd like to make the motion that Resolution R-52 through R-50...
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, through R-52.
So R-25-05 through R-25-054.
Yeah, be approved.
All votes are cast. Oh, Councilmember Davis, your vote. There we go, all votes are cast. That passes six to zero with Mayor Pro Tim Mormon being an excused absence. Next, we have one resolution on this evening's agenda, and that is R-25-055, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between Jefferson County R1 School District and the city of Arvada on behalf of the Arvada Police Department for the School Resource Officer Program. City Attorney's Office, Patrick Ermain. Patty, I'm sorry, how do I pronounce your last name?
Patrick Emmerine.
Okay, Emmerine, thank you, Patty.
It is all good. Good evening, Mayor Simpson, and members of council. Before you this evening is Resolution R-25-055, which is the resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between Jefferson County and the city of Arvada. What this intergovernmental agreement will allow for is the continued maintenance of our School Resource Officer Program, also known as the SRO program. This staffs our public schools here in the city of Arvada with uniformed officers that are assigned to the specialized unit, and they oversee day-to-day operations in the school, provide school security, foster relationships with our students, and provide safety and security for events such as any extracurriculars that may accompany those school events. This is not a new program. This is a program that has been in existence for some time. This is just a renewal of the contract, if you will, or redoing the contract, if you will, or the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Arvada and Jefferson County. The large takeaway from this intergovernmental agreement is this is actually a positive fiscal impact for the city of Arvada, where the Jefferson County R1 School District will actually pay 50% of the salaries for the officers assigned to this unit, that total salary, as well as a sergeant that oversees them, that total salary savings, if you will, or positive fiscal impact to the city of Arvada is just over $500,000, so about half a million in salary savings for our police department and full-time employees in the Arvada Police Department. I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you might have. Commander Ammon, to my left is the commander that oversees the unit and is available for any specific questions on the unit as well, but it is staff's recommendation to council that you approve or adopt the intergovernmental agreement, R-25-055. Thank you.
Councilmember Davis, you had your light on first.
Yes, do we have discussion?
I do. Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Yeah, so is that new, that the school district's paying 50%? That is new? So that we've always picked up that bill prior to this? Okay, all right, that's all I have. I see some head nods.
I was just confirming before I answered incorrectly. Yes, that is new, but it aligns with other school districts, so that is a positive development for us.
Wonderful. Will we be able to increase the number of school resource officers? I know with some of the schools, they tend to float around.
So the school resource officers are typically assigned to a specific school, depending on the officer, obviously vacation, sick time, as scheduling allows, dictates where an officer is assigned. If there are needs at a certain school for a larger event, if you will, the Arvada Police Department will staff that accordingly. And I'll turn it over to Commander Ammon on whether or not it would be a permanent increase in adding SROs, or what that's going to look like.
Good evening. Yes, currently, we have nine SRO positions for the police department. Eight of those have been filled, so we have one vacant position. There is some leeway within the IGA to allow for changes, increases in staffing, or decreases.
Okay, great. Councilmember Pfeiffer. Yeah. Councilmember Rupert.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity, actually, to speak to this. During my time on Jefferson County Board of Education, I can tell you how important the SROs are to our students in the schools. They develop relationships with them. They don't, it's not just a matter of providing security for the school. They work with our students, and quite often, they're instrumental in getting some of our high school students to graduation. And I've been through graduations and other events where, really, it's the resource officers that have been the biggest fans of some of these students, and so I am very proud to be supportive of this.
Wonderful. Councilmember Davis, you have the motion.
Yes, before I make the motion, I would like to say that I've met several of the SROs. They're wonderful. I've watched them in the hallways at the schools, and it's amazing how the students come up, give them fist bumps, even hugs, and it's an amazing program, and I'm glad that we are being a part of it. Having said that, I move that R-25-055, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between Jefferson County R1 School District and the city of Arvada on behalf of the Arvada Police Department for the School Resource Officer Program be approved.
Thank you. Councilmember Pfeiffer, you wish to speak to the motion?
Yeah, so Commander, if you'd share the team. I mean, I personally have been, my family's been impacted by the SROs, that's how they are. I mean, they have a genuine relationship with those kids, so make sure they all know that we appreciate them, and I think you're hearing it from all of us. I know, like I said, my immediate family has had a relationship with an SRO that's now retired, and it was very impactful for our family. So, you know, I think it's even beyond the graduation, it's even beyond the school boundary sometimes, it's at the home as well. So thank you for all those that do it, because it's not always an easy job either. And police officer of itself is a hard job, but to add caring for our kids, for our community is just added to it as well. Thank you.
Absolutely, I echo those comments. We're very proud of our SROs and the entire team. Thank you, Commander Ammon. Thank you, Patty. And with that, all votes are cast. That passes six to zero with Mayor Pro Tim Mormon being an excused absence. All right, next, we have first reading. Mayor Pro Tim Mormon is absent. Councilmember Davis? Oh, Councilmember Pfeiffer, that's right, wrong notes. There we go, Councilmember Pfeiffer.
All right, sorry, I was letting my peer there handle it. So first reading, I'd like to make the motion for Council Bill 25013, an ordinance amending Section 102-32, definitions and repealing, and reenacting Section 102-40, property owners' responsibility for charges of Article II Water and Sewer of Chapter 102 Utilities of the Arvada City Code. Public hearing to be set for July 1, 2025, at 6:15 PM. Be approved.
Thank you. That passes six to zero with Mayor Pro Tim Mormon being an excused absence. Next, I will open the public hearing of this evening's agenda. That is R-25-051, a resolution adopting the amended fee schedule for the waste hauling program pursuant to Chapter 90, Solid Waste, of the Arvada City Code, and authorizing the Third Amendment to an agreement between the city of Arvada and Allied Waste Transportation, Inc., doing business as Republic Services of Denver for residential solid waste collection services, thereby increasing waste services fees, and this is actually, my apologies, the next is our public hearing, this is the continuation from the June 3, 2025 meeting. Ms. Rhodes.
Thank you. Good evening, council. The resolution before you updates the fee schedule for solid waste services provided by Republic Services and for the services provided by the city, effective July 1, 2025. Section 9035, waste service fees of Arvada City Code, requires that the city council, by resolution, establish the fees to be imposed on all city residents to provide funding for city waste services. The resolution also amends the contract to extend to July 1, 2028, to allow the minimum service opt-out fee charged by Republic to be held at the current amount of $4.55 per month through that date. The solid waste services fee schedule is being updated to reflect a price increase from Republic Services in accordance with our contract. The increase in fees is 3.5%, as demonstrated by Republic Services with the National Water Sewer Trash Index. The solid waste services fee schedule is also being updated to reflect the increased cost of services that the city provides to the program. The waste hauling program is an enterprise fund, which is defined as a government-owned business that receives revenue in return for providing a good or service, and the recommended city fee increases will allow the program to be fully funded by revenues received from customers who receive the waste hauling program services. Customers will see an increase in their bills, again, effective July 1, 2025, including an overall increase ranging from $0.59 a month to $0.90 a month, based on cart service size, which brings the total cart service fee to $9.34, $13.92, and $18.50 for 35, 65, and 95-gallon cart sizes, respectively. An increase to a customer who lives in an HOA and receives the minimum program services will be $0.19 a month. This brings the city program fee to $1.69. An increase to a customer who does not live in an HOA and receives the minimum program services will be $0.19 a month, for a total of $6.24, because again, the minimum service fee is remaining at the current rate of $4.55. And a decrease to a customer who has an extra trash cart and receives the extra trash cart fee will be minus $0.15 per month, reducing the overall cost from $0.75 to $0.60. And a decrease to a customer who has an extra recycling cart and receives the extra recycling cart fee will be $0.05 a month, reduced from $0.65 to $0.60. The minimum service opt-out fee, again, will stay the same at the current $4.55 per month through July 1, 2028. New services added as part of this amendment since this item was continued from the June 3 hearing include one roll-off container for yard waste and one roll-off container for solid waste per contract year at the city pricing structure for Arvada residents who have opted into Arvada's waste hauling program for waste collection services. Additionally, the amendment includes language regarding the producer responsibility program for recycling, HB22135. It's Arvada's intent to participate to receive reimbursement for recycling expenses. Once the Producer Responsibility Organization, the Circular Action Alliance, implementation plan is approved by the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, we will work with Republic Services to execute any necessary amendment to the contract, including separating out the costs for providing recycling to each residence from the trash collection services costs. The Arvada team recommends that city council approve R-25051, a resolution adopting the amended fee schedule for the waste hauling program pursuant to Chapter 90, Solid Waste of the Arvada City Code, and authorizing the Third Amendment to an agreement between the city of Arvada and Allied Waste Transportation, doing business as Republic Services of Denver for residential solid waste collection services, thereby increasing waste services fees. The Arvada team and Republic Services are available to answer any additional questions that you may have related to this item.
Councilmember Ambrose.
Yes, thank you very much for taking our feedback and getting new fee schedules so quickly. I really appreciate, it must have been a hectic couple of weeks for you all to get such a big negotiation done, and I also really appreciate making the roll-off fee accessible to Arvada residents. It's like my wishes came true, so thank you so much for making that happen. I do have a question on this unacceptable disposed items in the fee schedule. What is the dry-run fee?
If it's acceptable, I'd like to ask Republic Services to come up and help me address that question directly.
Yeah, just to be clear, I'm looking at the page on the fee schedule, and the row that says unacceptable disposed items, and it says $50 per item, dry-run fee, $253 roll-off cost, $305 or $415. So I don't know what this dry-run fee is.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, I'm Detective for Republic Services. A dry-run fee is if a customer has contacted us to rent a roll-off, it's placed at their property, and then they call and say, "We're ready for you to come remove it," and we show up and the property is... And we show up, and the property is blocked, there's a car parked in front of it. There's some reason that we've sent a truck there to recover it, and we were unable. We'll take photographs of it, we'll document it, but there is a fee, there's a dry-run fee for going and not being able to access a container.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. And we'll make sure that that is clear to our residents when we announce that this is accessible to them.
We absolutely will do that.
Okay. Great. And that's all the questions I have.
All right. I see another lights if I have a motion. Councilmember Ambrose.
Yes. I move to approve, let me get the right language, sorry. I move that R-25-051, A Resolution Adopting the Amended Fee Schedule for the Waste-Hauling Program Pursuant to Chapter 90, Solid Waste of the Arvada City Code, and Authorizing the Third Amendment to an Agreement Between the City of Arvada and Allied Waste Transportation, Incorporated, Doing Business as Republic Services of Denver for Residential Solid Waste Collection Services, thereby increasing waste service fees be approved.
Thank you. All votes will be cast. Councilmember Marriott.
I'd like to make a comment. I'll be voting yes, and there's one reason I'll be voting yes, and that's because the fee, the opt-out fee, is not going up. I would vote no on this quickly if there was an increase to the opt-out fee, but because it's not, I have no problem with the rest of the fees going up. Obviously, it costs more to do business these days, and I think as residents understand, they can expect the fee to go up every year. But as long as the opt-out fee does not go up, or stays the same, or goes down, I would be voting yes.
Wonderful. I will be voting yes as well. Republic, thank you so much for your continued partnership over the years with this program. It's been operating really well. And for your quick action on making those roll-off pricing available to residents, I know that's going to help a lot of residents out, so thank you very much. With that, all votes have been cast. That passes six to zero with Mayor Pro Tim Mormon being an excused absence. Look forward to working with you for the years to come. All right. With that, now I will open the public hearing for this evening's agenda. That is CB 25-012, An Ordinance Authorizing the Acquisition of Certain Property Along Pier Street, generally from West 60th Avenue to West 64th Avenue, for the construction of street, sidewalk, utility, drainage, and other related improvements as part of the Pier Street Sidewalk Project Number 19-ST-20, Ordinance Number 4898. Councilmember Rupert.
Thank you. I'll be recusing myself from consideration of this item, as I have a family interest in one of the temporary construction easements properties.
Absolutely. Councilmember Davis?
I move that Mr. Rupert be recused from this issue.
All right. Councilmember Pfeifer, Ambrose, your votes?
Sorry.
It's okay. That passes five to zero. Councilmember Rupert, you are excused.
He's going to go grab a cookie. We're all jealous. Oh. Enjoy that cookie.
All right. With that, I will turn it over to the opening of the hearing to Ms. Deidra Oster, our civil engineer.
I'm really here to answer any questions you can have, but I can provide background if you'd like. Yes? Okay. This project will construct an ADA-compliant sidewalk on Pier Street from 60th Avenue to 64th Avenue. It is a Safe Routes to School project with a federal grant, and the intent of the project is to provide children a safe route to Seacrest Elementary. This ordinance is for the acquisition of ride-way and easements to allow the project to be constructed.
Is there anyone in chambers who would like to give public hearing on this particular agenda item? Seeing none, I will close the public portion comment of this evening's hearing, and I will open it to council questions or action. Councilmember Pfeifer?
Where is your question?
Councilmember Davis?
Okay.
All yours?
I move that Council Bill 25-012, An Ordinance Authorizing the Acquisition of Certain Property Along Pier Street, generally from West 60th Avenue to West 64th Avenue, for the construction of street, sidewalk, utility, drainage, and other related improvements as part of the Pier Street Sidewalk Project Number 19-ST-20 be approved on final reading Number 4898, and ordered published by title only. And I'm a huge fan of these safe routes to school, so if we could do those all day long, I'd be excited. Plus, it might knock out some of the sidewalk issues we have, too.
Yep. All right. Councilmember Davis?
I'm excited about the Safe Routes to School as well, and thank you so much for planning this.
Absolutely. We've heard about Pier Street for a really long time. I don't think there's been a District 2 council member for the last 40 years who hasn't heard about Pier Street. So, there we go, guys, and I am so excited about this one. With that, that passes five to zero. Councilmember Rupert being an excused absence, as is Mayor Pro Tim Mormon. With that, Councilmember Rupert, you may come back inside. Congrats. Progress on the sidewalk moves forward. All right. I will close public hearing for this evening and move us into a five-minute public comment. Is there anyone in chambers this evening who would like to give public comment at the five-minute limit? Seeing none, I will close the second public comment, and I will open it to City Council Surely, somebody had something happen. All right. Councilmember Davis, there we go.
So, I had the privilege of attending numerous block parties this past week and weekend. Thank you so much for inviting me. Had a great time, ate a lot of really great food, so I would encourage more block parties to go out there and get to know your neighbors. At one of the block parties, they actually had a sign-up sheet where you signed up if you had any special skills, like can you sew, or do maybe just some little light housing issues for maintenance. And I thought that was really neat in terms of helping your neighbors out, and it was really great. So, had a great time. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. Likewise, congratulations to the team who pulled together the Arvada Powwow. It was an enormous turnout, several thousand people. I've never seen that many cars parked on that lot in my life, so that was absolutely phenomenal. Look forward to having that back next year, as well as to Arvada Festivals for Summer Fest, which was also a tremendous success. And next year, they'll both be even bigger successes, because we won't schedule them opposite each other. With that, I will turn it over to reports from the city manager, Mr. Wick.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder that we don't have a meeting next week, so our next meeting will be a business meeting on July 1. And also, as a reminder, Thursday is a holiday, Juneteenth, and so City Hall will be closed. So, thank you.
Ms. Morris?
Nothing from me, Your Honor.
All right. With that, we stand adjourned.